All right, the time is 7:10. I am going to call to order this regular city council meeting for January 27, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pelivonaglu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
There are eight members present in the quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anyone that wants anyone to be remembered tonight?
Thank you. I'd like the family of Tom Delaney to be remembered at this time. He was a longstanding business owner in the city of Lansing, and he just recently passed away.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Can we please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
I'm raising my hand. Forgot I'm president. I'm going to go ahead and comment right now. Item eight, I'm sorry. The amendment, Part 12, Title VI, Form-Based Zone Code, Second Amendment, that was on ordinance for passage, we are going to pull and send back to the administration to correct errors that were found today. And that's all I have. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, President Cost. I just wanted to remind folks that on February 8, Adam Hussein and myself will have a joint constituent contact meeting at 10:00 a.m. at the Plumbers and Pipefitters Hall. That's 5405 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. We will have in attendance at that meeting Mayor Shore to give some updates about around the city. We will also have General Manager from the Borderwater Light, Dick Pefley, to discuss the South Lansing Transmission Reinforcement Project. So once again, that is Saturday, February 8, at 10:00 a.m. at the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union Hall at 5405 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
Thank you. Councilman Hussein.
Sure. I wanted to remind folks that tomorrow evening at 6:30 p.m. at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center, the rejuvenating South Lansing Group will actually be hosting its 10-year anniversary celebration. And as part of that, obviously reflecting on all the fantastic work and maybe prioritizing the work ahead, they will also have Mr. Ryan Cost as the president of council to be there to discuss his new role and kind of the direction of this body. And then also Lansing Police Department will be on hand to present particularly on things pertinent to South Lansing, trends in South Lansing, that type of thing. And there might even be a few giveaways. So I certainly suggest folks, if you have an opportunity, come on out and participate in that. And then the other piece is that I am going to beg folks frankly to get involved with the charter commission process. We are in the middle of a constitutional convention here in the city of Lansing, and Mr. Ryan Cost and myself presented the 21st of this month. I know Mr. Spatafor has been in before the commission. I know the mayor's been in before the commission. I've attended, just as a casual observer, as has other folks at this dais, and there's typically one to two people in the audience. And that is, to me, incredibly scary. This is, again, the document that creates our government, essentially provides direction for our government. And if you want a responsive, responsive, and effective government, you have never had a time like this. And so when we look at deficiencies of the current charter, when we look at issues with the government, whether or not that's working for you, the knobs and levers that are either there or are not there, that should be there, again, this is the time. We, I was taken aback frankly when one of the commissioners basically said when we were down in the well that the citizens of the city voted for a $500,000 looksee of the charter, that they were not elected to really make changes, but to rather maybe update some language, which implied, you know, maybe we'll fix some grammar issues and some formatting issues. That is incredibly tone deaf and out of touch, in my opinion. But it's easy to operate that way when folks aren't engaged. Every meeting I go to throughout the city of Lansing, I'm, you know, we're engaging scores of people. And everybody is wanting change within that charter. Yet here, right, the folks at this dais, and not all of them, but many of them are out of touch because they simply don't immerse themselves in the community in the way maybe we do. They truly believe that, I actually think that, they said something about, one of them said something about a status quo slate was elected. And I didn't want to say it because I was a guest in that meeting, but frankly, the reason the status quo slate was elected, and again, not all, there are some change agents on that body, is because of kind of the at-large reality within the city of Lansing. It costs a lot of money to run elections, and frankly, the folks that would have been change agents that ran for that particular body did not have the money, nor did they have the apparatus, right, to make sure that folks that were voting knew who they were and what they stood for. So I'm going to ask folks, I'm going to plead with folks, get to that charter commission meeting. If you go to the city of Lansing's government page, and you go to the upper right-hand corner, you can actually type in Charter Commission, and they have a fantastic landing homepage. On that page, they have archived meetings, they have a schedule, they have a link to email, they have a link to their Facebook page. The list goes on and on. And so I would ask that you take a look at that page, maybe, you know, familiarize yourself with that page, and then find a way to get involved, even if that's an email, or, you know, looking at the archived videos, and then maybe some commentary on what you all would like to see. It's critical. It's critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hussein. Councilmember Penny Vanaglu.
Thank you. Just to add to Councilman Hussein's comments, on that page on the city of Lansing website for charter commission, there is, I believe, an option for virtual comment. I do see several members of the community watching the meetings on Facebook and online, but you can participate virtually. So if you can't be here in person physically, there is an option for you to give your opinion during the meeting virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further remarks? Seeing none. All right.
I have no remarks tonight, so we are sorry to, community event announcements, if there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details of your event.
Hello? This thing on. So I'm Nicholas Zandi. I'm the president of the old Ever Neighborhood Association. I just want to inform you that we won't be having a neighborhood meeting in the month of February, because we're, I think we're doing this bimonthly. So our next neighborhood meeting is actually going to be in March on the third Wednesday, same location, same time, 6:30 p.m. at the Village Lansing. We still got to have more time to collect our grants and recruit more members, so hopefully that will give us more time to work ourselves out. But yeah, it's going to be in March, not February, so just want to inform you of that.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? All right, seeing none. Then we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters includes items two through eight on the agenda, even though item eight has been sent back to the administration, it is still eligible to be discussed. Two through, and with that, so we'll give you another minute or so to sign in. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Sorry, I usually.
Mayor Shore, sorry.
I usually wait for you. I don't want to jump the gun. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. I don't have a ton. I just want to point out, we have put on the website, and it will be introduced in, at the next council meeting, our annual report. I know council is going to study it diligently. It's 220 pages. I read it over the weekend, and honestly, I hope you will read it. I hope the members of the public will go on our website and read it. It gives me tremendous pride in what our city employees are doing for our city. All 13 departments, there are pictures and things like that, so it's not straight text of 220 pages, but it is an impressive document. We will be sharing that in pieces, week by week, to highlight different departments, so that way people can see it on social media in addition to just on the website. We're trying to download it and read it all at once. We will be sharing that. And again, I think we all should be very proud of the work that our city employees are doing for our residents. In addition, when we look at our firefighters, wanted to let you know, I know Councilman Garza, this has been a question you've asked in the past, we just opened up our paramedics' positions permanently. So it will continue to be open until we have filled those. I know there are questions in the past about why it's open for a month or two months, but these are laterals. So if there are any lateral paramedics out there that want to come work for the city, great job, great benefits. And for all those here, I hope folks will encourage paramedics to come work for the city, but we now have a continual job opening for paramedics, and that's, it's real important. And so I hope folks will apply. Speaking of the fire department, I want to thank them for their exceptional work. We had a wonderful MLK ceremony last Monday celebrating Dr. King. We had a small projector fire on one of the, in the ceiling, and, but our firefighters were incredible. They got there, they, it was put out, the temperature was tested, it was vented. People were very, very patient. And 45 minutes later, we got to finish the event, and it went well. So I want to thank our LFD firefighters. I also want to congratulate our Empower Program graduates. This is part of our Lansing Equitable Economic Development Program that was passed with ARPA money that was passed by this body, the city council, and proposed by the administration. And we now have some folks who are graduating from the Empower Program, and we're excited to see that. And that's what I've got. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Shore.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that's items two through eight on the agenda. There are no public hearings, so we'll go right to the public. We have Nicholas Zandi followed by Willie Hobbs.
So I'm going to speak on item number seven. That's, I think, an easement of use for the right subway on the corner of South Washington Avenue and West Lenawee Street. That's in the downtown area. And I'll just tell you about this. It's, since it's for some sort of like an ovation center. You know, it's kind of interesting that you're bringing this up. I'm not going to take a side on this issue either way, but what I am going to say about what's been going on downtown, I've been hearing at the council meeting during public comment that businesses there have not been treated very well, especially local businesses. And there's been, and a lot of that may have some racial connotations, which I'm not going to go into, obviously, since I'm white, and I shouldn't, I don't know if I should be speaking on that, but what I've seen of that, that is a, pardon me, that is just a, like, that sounds completely tone deaf for me, and the fact that the city, that many businesses there have been just really horribly treated around that area, probably in the city in general, but this is genuinely not okay. I'm, I mean, something's being done there in the right of way. Obviously, I don't know what that's, what's really being done there, other than amusing an arts ovation center, but all I can say is it better not be really poorly treated, like so many businesses and so many other things have been treated downtown. It is just downright, it just feels, it just, hearing that, it kind of concerned me, and I genuinely do feel sorry for the many businesses downtown that were mistreated by the city for a long time. And also, I know this isn't really on the agenda, but I appreciate Adam Hussein's comments on the Charter Commission. They are completely out of, they are definitely very, definitely, there are a couple of them that are definitely out of touch, and I'm glad for some of the few of them that are actually doing their job and actually trying to make meaningful changes other than the language. So that's all I'm going to say, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Be back.
Thank you. And it appears the other speaker is not in the room, so we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I motion to approve the consent agenda as written. The reappointment of Don Sober as the member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire July 31, 2028, and the council rules amend Rule 16, Standing Committees to Establish Committee on Municipal Audits.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to resolutions for action. Item four, the ad hoc, conclusion of the ad hoc committee on audit.
So I'm going to pass the gavel because my name is up first.
I recognize, President Council, Cost.
Thank you. What we have here is the conclusion of the ad hoc committee on the audit. It will end, cease the audit ad hoc, and move it into a committee which will be announced at the end of the meeting. And so I move the resolution.
Council vote? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it passes for the conclusion of ad hoc committee on audit.
Okay, we are to item five, the appointment of Christopher Harkins to the Board of Water and Light.
Vice President Carter.
All right, earlier, had the committee uphold, we had Christopher Hawkins here, Harkins here, who spoke to us regarding his appointment at large for Borderwater Light for the term to expire June 30. He had expressed that he had nearly 18 years of being here as a Lansing resident, believes in the community, and to give back to the community. He had a series of different boards that he previously had served on, but he has relinquished those and resigned, so he has time and availability to work with Borderwater Light as a board member. He also expressed that he has worked with Governor Whitmer on her budget, as a budget director, so he knows a lot about looking at the financial scope of things within large and complex organizations. There was questions if he had availability to serve, and he was adamant to say yes, due to him resigning from previous boards. And he does have expertise in monitoring the strategic planning for Borderwater Light, and he does have, understand the goals of the clean energy goals as well. And he is looking forward, oh, and he also has some knowledge on clean drinking water. He was part of that initiative back when he was working for the state. So all in all, he was thrilled to be a part of this board of Lansing, Borderwater Light. And so I will move the resolution to adopt.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes seven to one.
Okay, we're to item eight, the appointment of Shelby Freyer to the ADLPA Board of Commissioners.
Vice President Carter.
All right, we also had Shelby Freyer here as an at-large appointment member for the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners, term to expire on June 30, 2025. Shelby was, she was able to speak to the willingness to attend the constituent meetings, and that she decided to serve on the board of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities due to its vacancy. There was other choices, but those did not have any vacancy at the time. Other than that, I move the resolution to adopt.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Oppose. What was that? Can we do a roll call?
On the appointment, Councilmember Carter.
Nay.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
No.
Councilmember Pelivonaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
No.
Five nays, three ayes, the resolution is not adopted. And with that, we are to item seven, Act 8, 2024.
All right, this.
Vice President Carter, sorry.
Oh, thank you. This Act 8, 2024, easement for use of right of way for, on South Washington Avenue and West Lenawee for an ovation center for music and arts. The purpose of this was to ensure the facility serves guests through a barrier-free access accommodation, and it optimized the guest experience through offering weather protection of those who are waiting to enter the facility. The other portion of it is that it helps for those who have, need additional accessibility needs as far as the ramp. This would be an encroachment that will extend up to about five feet into South Washington, and also about 4.5 feet on West Lenawee. And again, is to help with the ability, accessibility for those who are waiting outside. And with that, I move the resolution to adopt.
We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you wish to address city council, we'll give you about another minute to get with Haley and complete a form if you haven't already. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Carter.
I motion that all items be considered as being read in full, and the proper referrals be made by President Cost.
We have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
From the mayor, grant acceptance, Lansing Police Department, burn justice assistance grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Grant acceptance, National Trust for Historic Preservation.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Act 6, 2024, Vacation of the Horn Drain Easement for Lansing School of History.
Development and Planning.
Act 7, 2024, Permanent Utility Easement for Consumers' Energy at 1801 North Washington.
Development and Planning.
Special Assessment, two items related to the Glen Burn Commons Trash and Grass Abatement.
City Operations.
And Communications and Petitions, we have two notices from the Liquor Control Commission for transfers of liquor licenses.
Both City Operations.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
First, I would like to make a remark. I'm going to read into the record the new committee on ad hoc membership. It will be Chairman Spatafor, Vice Chair Carter, and Member Councilwoman Penny Vanaglu. Is there any further comments by any councilmembers? Seeing and hearing, oh, Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to say it was a pure joy to do our at-large constituent contact this weekend with all of the at-large members. It was a true pleasure, and we also thank Moneyball, Desmond Ferguson, for hosting. We had some great dialogue, and were able to have a well-organized meeting that was, meeting that was meaningful, and we were able to listen to constituents. We look forward to the next one coming up in the next quarter. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Seeing no more comments.
We are to mayor's remarks.
Mayor Shore.
Okay, then public comment on city government-related matters. We have Nate Ford followed by Nancy Malo.
Good evening, Lansing City Council. I am Nate Ford, one of the co-founders of the Lansing Enthiogens and Psychedelic Society. One of our missions was to cultivate safe spaces for people that live or want to come to Lansing to share their experiences with psychedelics, to grow, gain knowledge, and progress as human beings. We think that Lansing City Council adopting a resolution similar to what was adopted four years ago in the city of Ann Arbor is the best move to help as many people as possible. Not everybody can be helped with plant medicine, but some can. Recently, the, pardon me, currently, the Department of Veterans Affairs is conducting studies into the efficacy of entheogens and psychedelics for the treatment of PTSD. This offers Lansing the opportunity both to, both to do what's right for the people of Lansing who want to treat their mental and physical issues, as well as potentially bring study funding to our local economy. So that would be a good thing for Lansing. Our next meeting is the third Wednesday of February, on February 15. We'd love to invite all of you to attend that meeting so that you can see what we do and what we talk about and what we're planning. And we're also, we've also emailed all of your offices since the beginning of this meeting tonight to give you a copy of the resolution that was adopted in Ann Arbor, so that you all have a copy. And we'll be reaching out to the city council members that we haven't spoken with privately to try and educate you and to interact with you, and hopefully gain your support to vote yes to adopt a resolution here to help the community of Lansing. Thank you for your time. Happy New Year. Have a great night. Keep smiling.
Thank you. Next, and finally, we have Nancy Malo.
Good evening, President Cost, councilmembers, and Mayor Shore. It's my understanding that an at-large position is now available on the Public Service Board. I would encourage Mayor Shore, if you would reach out to Peckham, so that we can have another person on this board that can bring valuable insight. We had someone a few years ago, and the amount of information and ideas that she brought was priceless. So I would like to encourage you to, again, try to fill it with someone from Peckham or Disability Network or anyone in that, that area. The other issue is Michigan Avenue. It's the only street that goes directly to the Capitol. Right now, there are approximately, could be, give or take, 25 empty buildings along the avenue. The Michigan Avenue Corridor Authority doesn't seem to be doing much to help the situation. No communication with the businesses, and some have no idea who the Corridor Authority is, when they meet, the day they meet, et cetera. Can we please attempt to correct this embarrassing situation? Because this, again, it takes us right to the Capitol. When people come into our city, this is what they're seeing when they're driving to come downtown. I think that's basically all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker for the evening.
All right, with that, we are adjourned at 7:40. All right, with that, we are adjourned at 7:40.